Good morning. Convening our Health and Homelessness hearing. Today is March 22nd, 2023, 9:00 a.m. We are in conference room 329. As is the practice of this committee, we will be taking testimony via Zoom. Members on Zoom or participants on Zoom, if we do lose connection, we may have to discontinue the hearing, but please work with our staff who will help you move through the process if for some reason there is a technical difficulty. Also, as is the practice of this committee, we will be conducting decision-making on all of these measures at our 11:30 timeframe. So I will recess this hearing at the end of taking your testimony, and then we will do decision-making at 11:30 a.m. So on that note, taking up first Senate Bill 1492 relating to mental health. We have testimony first in support from Department of Health.
Good morning, Chair, committee members. My name is Mary Ann Suji. I'm the Deputy Director for Behavioral Health, and we'll stand on our written testimony. We have a number of members of staff who can answer questions if the committee has.
Thank you. We have testimony in support, Office of the Governor. Comments or testimony in support from the judiciary? Comments from Attorney General's office via Zoom or in person?
Yes. Thank you. Good morning, Chair and committee members. Deputy Attorney General Ian Sood on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General, providing comments. Our comments focus on the data-tracking portion of this bill, and we're recommending language to specify which individuals and entities will provide this data to the Department of Health. This is necessary to ensure that the Department of Health can fulfill the data collection mandate under this bill. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Testimony in support from Alan Johnson, Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition. Testimony in support from the Institute for Human Services. And comments by Lou Erdeschek. Any other testifiers in the room? Any other testifiers in Zoom? Any comments or questions, members? Go ahead, Representative Kobayashi.
The bill says, page five, "The department shall dispatch staff or service providers to assist," et cetera. Can you do this on a 24/7 timely basis, especially when the public may contact the department through a hotline, a crisis line, or other means?
Thank you, Rep., for the question. We currently do that through the Hawaii Cares Line. Crisis calls come in, and they, in the event that we have a crisis, the Crisis Mobile Outreach Team will go and physically meet with the individual, and they are available 24/7.
I see. And this is statewide?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I would think that to have this shell in statute should be tempered a bit. I mean, like, within available resources, like...
I think that's a good idea considering our workforce shortage right now.
I mean, it doesn't say when you dispatch staff or service provider, but obviously if the call comes in through a hotline or a crisis line, it's like, now, not next week.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments, questions, or concerns? Moving on to Senate Bill 1594. This is also relating to crisis intervention. We have testimony in support from Department of Health.
Again, Department of Health will stand on its testimony, and we are available for questions.
Okay. Testimony in support, Hawaii State Council on Mental Health. Testimony in support, Kirby Shaw, Disability and Communication Access Board. Testimony in support, Honolulu Police Department.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Mike Lambert, Honolulu Police Department. I am the department's law enforcement chair for crisis intervention teams, and we stand in strong support. I stand on our written testimony, and I'll be available for questions.
Testimony in support from Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition, Alan Johnson. Testimony in support, Hawaii Disability Rights Center, Louis Erdeschek. Testimony in support, Institute for Human Services, Connie Mitchell. Testimony in support from Will Carone, individual. Support Shannon Rudolph, individual. Raylin Reyno, support individual. Melissa Rivas, individual. Testimony in support from Ellen Godby-Carson, individual. And testimony in support from Jean Wheeler, individual. Any other testifiers in the room?
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Mark Tom for the Department of the Prosecuting Attorneys, Honolulu. The department is in support of this bill. The department, I apologize, the department did not submit testimony when we saw the bill. We will submit late testimony in support of this bill. We believe that Section 2 in this bill works concurrently with parts of sections in House Bill 1442, which is essentially, partly talks about a diversion program. This is found on pages 20 to 21. It's a 53-page bill in House Bill 1442 specifically. The suggestion would be, at least from our office, is that Section 2, which is that new section in 334, could possibly be removed and put paragraphs from page 20 and 21 from 1442 into the preamble. And the only reason why, Chair, is that this is, all the stakeholders, Department of Health, judiciary, prosecutors, public defenders, went up to Miami-Dade County to observe a diversion program that is in effect and has been running for approximately almost 25 years. We are in, working in conjunction with all these stakeholders and have an MOA that we're going to be implementing plans for misdemeanors as well as felony offenses pursuant to this MOA. And in this Section 2, it might be a little premature that there's already codifying a diversion program since we're working off of MOA. So maybe putting it in the preamble to at least refer so everybody understands what we do intend to hopefully, with success with the program, come back and maybe at that point codify. But I cannot speak for Section B with the department leasing or acquiring a behavioral health center, crisis. We do believe that's really important to have all those facilities available when we do start putting together the MOA. So that would just be the suggestion. We could put that in writing after and submit, Chair, but we do support this bill, and I think this is a very important matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other testifiers? Any other testifiers in Zoom? Seeing none? Questions or comments? Questions? Quizzical, Representative Kobayashi?
For Department of Health. We got testimony from Honolulu Police Department. Are all police departments capable of having sufficient numbers of crisis intervention officers?
I can't speak for the different departments, but we would totally support their training for crisis workers.
I mean, can you train enough people fast enough?
I think that there is a, at least the start of a training program at each of the police departments, so it would be a matter of going in and maybe refining, maybe updating. We would have to take a look at their curricula, but we're involved right now in portions of the respective training that we help the police departments with.
I mean, my understanding of the, is that the training components for the different departments sort of are a bit hit or miss, and to train enough officers for 24/7 coverage is not a one-year process.
Correct. I'm going to ask Dr. Champion. He's been involved with HPD's training and provides some of that training, so maybe he can...
Well, I'm not so much interested in HPD, but Neighbor Islands.
So Neighbor Islands, I do know, I'm aware of the fact that we did help stand up some of those programs with some of our block grant money.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy, I have some questions. On this section two, you folks are kind of shying away from the wording of program. Why is that?
These are activities that we're already participating in, so we just kind of felt that these were activities that we would just add on to.
Okay. I'm concerned that if it says "an expansion of crisis intervention and diversion activities" that you folks will then not execute on this because, for some reason, funding would fall out, and it's not an expansion. But what we want you to do is better use the existing services and purchase-of-service programs that you already have. So what is the series or the constellation of crisis intervention and diversion activities you have? Under what line item or division does that occur?
I couldn't give you the exact line number, but I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. What about the division, maybe? Dr. Champion could address that? I don't know.
Within the division, I... I think that the crisis line actually crosses a number of different areas. So crisis is, consists of the crisis line, the Hawaii Cares Line, Crisis Mobile Outreach, so where we deploy folks to actually meet with folks, and then our stabilization beds. Some of this overlaps with some of the forensic folks, and the rest of it is out there for the community. So we don't really want to pigeonhole it into a particular, you know, this is only for forensic, or this is only for public.
Okay. And then, in terms of that last sentence, these activities shall collaborate with law enforcement. I think actually it should be better that the department shall collaborate with law enforcement, courts, mental health providers, and the community in execution of these activities.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I am disinclined to strike this as suggested by the Office of the Prosecutor, because this is actually things that are directing the department to do. So I think that's actually an inappropriate request, and do you have a problem with us including this language?
The language would be...
The language, as you've amended and as we've discussed here.
No.
No. Because it is, it's a direction to you. It's not a direction to other parties.
Right.
It's what you should do, and that you should be collaborating as a department.
Correct.
Okay.
Which I think that we're all doing right now.
So it's codifying existing practice?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Members, any other questions, comments, or concerns? All right, seeing none. Moving on to Senate Bill 1472, another bill relating to behavioral health services. We have testimony in support from Department of Health.
The Department of Health will stand on its testimony, and we are available for questions.
Thank you. Testimony in support, Hawaii Medical Association, Mark Alexander. Testimony in support, Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition, Alan Johnson. Testimony in support, Hawaii Disability Rights Center, Lou Erdeschek. Testimony in support, Will Carone, individual. Testimony in support, Shannon Rudolph, in support, individual. Testimony in support, Raylin Reyno-Yoemanz, individual. Testimony in support from individual Jean Wheeler. In the audience, any testimony? Late testimony in the Zoom room? Any late testimony? Members, any questions? All right, seeing none. Moving on to... Senate Bill... 1016. There's no testimony for this.
No testimony.
Okay, no testimony.
Chair?
A testimony from the audience. Please come forward.
Good morning, Chair Bellotti and Vice Chair Representative Kobayashi, Linda Rosen for HHSC. I'm sorry if you did not receive our testimony. We provided comments. The instruction to HHSC that's contained in this measure, we're certainly happy to comply with, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other testifiers in the room? All right. Any other testifiers in Zoom? Members, any questions of Ms., Dr. Rosen? I have a question, Dr. Rosen. This is intended, as I understand from the introducers, to apply only to Maui, as it is the only regional system that has entered into a public-private partnership. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
And then, can you give us some background as the committee as to why some of this may be necessary from your perspective?
Well, I'm not sure regarding the first part as far as the change from the requirement for an applicant to have a CON, and there's some language added about "or license." I really am not sure what the intent of that is. We are in a transfer agreement in a lease with Maui Health Systems, a 30-year lease with two 10-year extensions. But I suppose that would apply if for any reason that was somehow needed to be renegotiated. The other part of it, which has to do with HHSC informing the governor regarding any changes... changes, that would certainly be amenable to us. And I'm not sure, there may have been some misunderstanding when that transfer agreement was drafted, that the governor, you know, was fully aware of all of the elements of the original transfer agreement. But, but in any case, certainly there would be no changes made without informing the governor according to this measure and we would certainly agree with that.
In this language, modifying or terminating any existing agreements in the execution of the public-private agreement with the current operator, has there been any attempts since it was agreed to where any of the parties sought to modify or terminate?
No, not at all.
But the term of the lease is from what date to what date?
I believe, well, the transfer occurred in 2017. The lease, the term is for 30 years with the option for two 10-year extensions. So we have two, the transfer agreement, which governs the transfer, and then we have a lease. And we still have some property in Kula that remains with HHSC that MHS did not want as part of the agreement.
So the first time, and I'm going to calculate, do I use my phone? For a possible modification would be, or actually renewal is actually 2047. Is that approximately correct?
I think so, yes.
And that would be for the first renewal?
Correct.
And then how many?
Two 10-year potential renewals for a total of 50 years. And then we remain the caretakers of the real property.
Okay. Is there any indication from your perspective where there is any possible discontent with the agreements that were reached or not reached or memorialized or not memorialized?
I, I do believe that, you know, there has, well, it's been some concern, which, which was expressed during the negotiation of the transfer agreement and the lease by the Maui Regional Board, that they would, would have preferred to have some, I guess you would call it quality oversight or some, you know, input into, I guess, clinical operations. And the governor and his team, and we at corpora, we're very aware of that, but by law from CMS, there's something called a change of ownership, which has to occur in order for the new entity to bill for services and other matters. And they require that the new entity have complete and unfettered control when you transfer that, that ability, that CMS designation, if you will. And so as the Attorney General and the attorneys work through the transfer agreement, it was not possible to actually, if you will, memorialize in the agreement that HHSC would have some, if you will, jurisdiction over the operations of MHS. And of course, that may not have been what, you know, the Maui region would have preferred, but it was, it was basically a matter of the legal requirements for the transfer of the ability to operate and bill for services at those facilities.
Okay. From your perspective again, now that the transfer has occurred, change of ownership has occurred, is there any problem with now, you know, this is a community hospital. This is an agreement. So there are, I think, conditions that would be reasonable. Is there any reason why we cannot impose those conditions?
Only to the degree that I just described. Again, we don't have any jurisdiction at this point over their clinical operations. And if the state, I'm not really sure exactly what you might suggest. Now, the Maui Regional Board did get in the transfer agreement the ability to nominate three members to the MHS board. And also, you know, again, they have some jurisdiction potentially if they wanted to exercise it regarding the real property at Kula, but to this date, they have not. So I think you'd have to speak with those parties on Maui as to what their goal is and go from there.
Again, I, I, I understand the constraints, but I think as a community hospital and input.
I think input is definitely important and I wouldn't imagine that MHS would be successful in operating that hospital if they did not take community input. So I think community input, and they have a board, and if the community wants to go to the board and, you know, provide input, I'm pretty sure they could. So input, I think, is one thing, but control, of course, is something else.
Certainly, but you know, again, this is public-private partnership, the public deserves a part in this. And I think that might be where some of this is in fact coming from. So thank you. Thank you for your candidness. I think this is helpful in, in moving forward.
Thank you very much.
One, one last thing.
Sure.
My concern is that this really, really needs to be just constrained to Maui. Do you have any opposition? I'm not certain what the...
I would, I would not have any opposition. As you pointed out earlier, we don't have any other agreements that are similar to this. But I do understand from the introducer that this is about Maui, so I don't know if that would be a problem or not, but certainly we would not have any objection to that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rosen. Members, any questions?
For HHSC, I'm getting, my impression is that there's no urgency for this bill. That is, there doesn't seem to be any new agreement that's up for consideration within the next year or so.
Oh, yes, Representative Kobayashi, you're correct about that. There is a recent change that may have something to do with this, which is that Mr. Michael Rembus, who has been the CEO for Maui Health Systems, not immediately after the transfer, there was an interim, but he's pretty much been the CEO since the transfer. And he has decided to retire. And that's something that's happened this spring.
But that's not a new agreement.
Oh, no. I'm just speculating as to why, you know, at this point, there, there might be some resurfacing and maybe, maybe there's an interest in having further conversations with, with Kaiser MHS at this point.
So I don't see the need for this bill.
To, to...
We can do it next year.
I'm not sure.
Or maybe 10 years from now.
Well, to clarify, the language in this bill says, before entering into any new agreement or modifying or terminating any existing agreement, a modification to the point of like what you just said could occur.
Yes, it could. If, if requested by both parties, I mean, you know, the transfer agreement has certain situations, although they require quite a lengthy, you know, notification period and there's other safeguards in there, you know, there's these force majeure type of things in there. But it's not necessarily, I would say, we, unilaterally, would not very easily change that agreement, right? You know, there are different provisions. It could be changed, but it either requires some pretty extreme conditions or, or mutual agreement and, you know, a period of time.
Is the lease and transfer agreement public documents?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Is it possible to submit that to the committee?
Yes. I believe they may be on our website, but I'd be sure that you get them.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rosen. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Moving on. Thank you, Dr. Rosen. That was very, actually very, very helpful. Senate Bill 1381, we have testimony in support from Department of Health and this is to repeat, relating to the repeal of Section 328-106.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Rep. Kobayashi, Lauren Kim, Planning and Policy Officer for DOH. This is an administration proposal. It repeals an orphaned Section 328-106 from the Food, Drug and Cosmetics Act. This was a well-intentioned but misplaced section. At the heart of the matter is regulation of pharmacy benefit managers, and this predates the implement, the enactment of Chapter 431 S, pharmacy benefit managers under DCCA where that conversation is taking place. Very serious conversation. I left a link in the testimony to some of the national conversation and model law. However, the Department of Health is not the appropriate agency for this. This, what this gets at is basically a financial disagreement between two private for-profit entities, one of whom is an out-of-state company contracted by local health plans to manage retail point-of-sale pharmaceutical transactions. I believe I left a pretty comprehensive rationale of why this should be repealed. We simply do not have the expertise, the Department of Health is not the appropriate agency to enforce financial contractual disputes between two private entities. That is perhaps the jurisdiction of a court of competent, that is probably the jurisdiction of a court. And again, the Chapter 431 S pharmacy benefit managers is where that conversation is taking place. It's ineffective. It actually provides false hope for some of the pharmacies and I've had a discussion with them. Earlier this session, informal discussion, they had originally opposed it. They saw this as a lifeline, but I explained with the help of my Deputy Attorney General that this is really not going to do anything. The market adjusted, industry adjusted to this very quickly. And the likelihood of an appeal getting overturned for two cents times 1,000 prescriptions a month is extremely unlikely. There is just no financial interest on behalf of the out-of-state pharmacy benefit manager to uphold an appeal. So with that, we hope the conversation continues under 431 S, but the department is just not equipped to do forensic accounting and the rest of the statute does not support our enforcement of this. One last comment I'll make to that point. The Food, Drug and Cosmetics Act is to preserve the fidelity of labeling and the safety of consumer products. So our inspectors go into, for example, a big box retailer and they have the right to enter their storeroom and see how pallets of drugs are being stored. Are they on the ground? Are they just lying around? Is the temperature controlled, et cetera? And they have the right to access paper manifests and that pharmacy has, is obliged to provide it to us so that we can regulate the storage of those pharmacy drugs. Because PBMs are out-of-state and all transactions are electronic, the statute just, does not support us going in saying, turn over all your records, turn over all your EMRs and your electronic systems. They can simply refuse and we will not be able to enforce this. So for a variety of reasons, we ask that this measure move forward and that the conversation for the regulation of PBMs take place under 431 S.
Okay.
Thank you.
There are no other testifiers in the room and no other testifiers via Zoom. Any questions for Mr. Kim? I, I have a question. I'm just, this is really...
Yes, Chair.
Because I don't know. Do you have any role in Chapter 431 S, you, the department?
No. The emerging conversation seems to be registration of, again, pharmacy benefit managers are out-of-state. Everything happens electronically, so they're not incorporated in the state of Hawaii. So one of the early regulatory schemes is to ask, is to have them, is to compel them to register in the state. And so that link to the National Academy for State Health Policy does present some ideas for jurisdictions to get a hold of this issue. PBMs are sort of, I'm getting a little editorial here, but you know, PBMs are a fact of life, but we desperately need to keep our small independent pharmacies viable. I walk into certain big box retailers a couple of times to, to do my shopping and I enjoy the convenience, but we learned certainly during the pandemic that it's the small independent pharmacies who have the heart to serve their communities. So while maybe some of the big box retailers did some of the low-hanging fruit in terms of testing, which was absolutely necessary, we contracted, my office contracted with small independent pharmacies to go after the heart to get folks who would resist testing. They literally know what parks they live in. They literally know what auntie lives with uncle and so on and so forth. They literally will trade a bag of mangoes because auntie ran out of money for her prescription drugs that month. That's something that a big box retailer can't do. And so again, pardon my editorializing, we do need to keep the small independent pharmacies as part of our community, but we do live with pharmacy benefit managers and that conversation needs to happen under DCCA.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kim. Any other questions, comments or concerns?
I've got mangoes.
You've got to find the right pharmacies.
Yeah.
Pharmacy. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, members. That concludes our taking of testimony for our 9:00 AM agenda. We will go into recess and resume. We have an 11:15 AM agenda followed by a few others and then we will take up decision-making on this agenda at 11:30. Thank you. We are in recess.
Good morning, convening our 11:15 AM agenda. This is a joint meeting, hearing of the Health and Homelessness Committee as well as Economic Development Committee. Good morning Chair Holt. Thank you for allowing us to have a hearing on this bill. Members, this measure is Senate Bill 1035, S.D. 2 for our audience members. As is the practice of this committee, we will be conducting, actually as soon as we get a quorum, we will conduct our DM on this matter, but we may jump forward to our 11:20 AM agenda and take a recess from this. If we lose anyone on Zoom, please be patient with us and work with our competent staff to make sure that we can get you back online. We may have to pause and come back to you, but we will handle that accordingly. So let's get started, members. Senate Bill 1035, S.D. 2 relating to our general excise tax. I note by saying that we passed a measure in both of these committees, in House Bill 662 previously. It's my inclination and will be my recommendation to insert the comments of House Bill 662, the latest draft that went over into this measure, just so that we can expedite some of this process. So first up, we have testimony with comments from the Department of Taxation in person.
Hello Chair, members of the committee. My steers, members of the committee. Just to know you've offered comments.
Thank you. University of Hawaii in support.
AARP Hawaii in support in person.
Good morning Chair, members of the committee. I'm Audrey Suga-Nachagawa, Advocacy Director for AARP. AARP stands in its testimony in support of this measure. You know, we support this measure because of our real concern for the diminishing access to health care, especially for our Kapuna who's growing in ranks. We have over 279,000 Medicare beneficiaries and we have a shrinking number of physicians that are available to take care of them and for all others. We just can't have this continue to go on. Doctors are retiring, new doctors are migrating out of the state, and they're reluctant to take the Medicare, Medicaid, and TRICARE patients because of the lower reimbursements. And so having this particular bill at least helps remove one of the barriers for these physicians so that they can continue the care that we really need. When you think about the seniors as they're growing, the risk for medical conditions increases. And so when you think about who are seeing, the cardiologist, the pulmonologist, the rheumatologist, the neurologist, urologist, and can go on and on, they're the older adults. And so we really need to keep our doctors, we need to expand the workforce for our physicians. Thank you very much for your support of this measure.
Thank you. Testimony and support from Hawaii Federation of Republican Women in person, Ms. Detweiler.
Aloha Chair Boladi, Chair Holt, Vice Chairs and members of the committee. Jamie Detweiler here testifying on behalf of the Hawaii Federation of Republican Women. We stand in strong support of this bill. It's actually really refreshing to support a bill rather than oppose one. Just had to put that in there. So according to a University of Hawaii report on the Hawaii physician workforce.
Good morning. Convening our 11:15 a.m. agenda. This is a joint meeting, hearing of the Health and Homelessness Committee as well as Economic Development Committee. Good morning, Chair Holt. Thank you for allowing us to have a hearing on this bill. Members, this measure is Senate Bill 1035, S.D. 2 for our audience members. As is the practice of this committee, we will be conducting, actually, as soon as we get a quorum, we will conduct our DM on this matter, but we may jump forward to our 11:20 a.m. agenda and take a recess from this. If we lose anyone on Zoom, please be patient with us and work with our competent staff to make sure that we can get you back online. We may have to pause and come back to you, but we will handle that accordingly. So let's get started, members. Senate Bill 1035, S.D. 2 relating to our general excise tax. I note by saying that we passed a measure in both of these committees, in House Bill 662 previously. It's my inclination and will be my recommendation to insert the comments of House Bill 662, the latest draft that went over into this measure, just so that we can expedite some of this process. So first up, we have testimony with comments from the Department of Taxation in person.
Hello, chairs, my steers, members of the committee. Just to know you've offered comments.
Thank you. University of Hawaii in support. AARP Hawaii in support in person.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Audrey Sugan Nakagawa, advocacy director for AARP. AARP stands in its testimony in support of this measure. You know, we support this measure because of our real concern for the diminishing access to health care, especially for our kupuna who's growing in ranks. We have over 279,000 Medicare beneficiaries, and we have a shrinking number of physicians that are available to take care of them and for all others. We just can't have this continue to go on. Can't, doctors are retiring, new doctors are migrating out of the state, and they're reluctant to take the Medicare, Medicaid, and TRICARE patients because of the lower reimbursements. And so having this particular bill at least helps remove one of the barriers for these physicians so that they can continue the care that we really need. When you think about the seniors as they're growing, the risk for medical conditions increases. And so when you think about who are seeing, the cardiologist, the pulmonologist, the rheumatologist, the neurologist, urologist, and can go on and on, they're the older adults. And so we really need to keep our doctors, we need to expand the workforce for our physicians. Thank you very much for your support of this measure.
Thank you. Testimony and support from Hawaii Federation of Republican Women in person, Ms. Detwiler.
Aloha, Chair Bolati, Chair Holt, vice chairs and members of the committee. Jamie Detwiler here testifying on behalf of the Hawaii Federation of Republican Women. We stand in strong support of this bill. It's actually really refreshing to support a bill rather than oppose one. Just had to put that in there. So according to a University of Hawaii report on the Hawaii physician workforce, back in December of 2022, the state is short approximately 776 doctors and growing. I had the privilege and honor of working in health care for over 30 years, 10 years at Kaiser Permanente and 23 years in the federal government as a licensed social worker and then ending my career as a medical mediator in risk management. So I've seen firsthand the impact, which I'd like to focus my attention on today, on individuals and family members. And as a previous testifier just mentioned, our kupuna. So, you know, it affects us both personally and professionally, for me, anyway. My mom is 84 years old and lives on Hawaii Island. Access to specialty care doctors is very difficult. Fortunately, she is healthy right now, but should she need specialty care, it's a long wait for those, for getting those appointments. So I want to also take this time to acknowledge each and every one of you, our policymakers here today. You have difficult decisions on so many bills that are facing all of us. And I want to thank you for your commitment to ensuring the well-being of our kupuna and families. As previous testimony stated also, as we age, we're going to need more specialized care. And to have this tax relief is going to be such a burden lifted off of our physician community as well as the people who utilize those services. Thank you, and again, support of this bill. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Detwiler, for being here. We have numerous organizations in support as well as individuals, but we have these folks signed up to testify in person. Ted Kafalas, are you here for Grassroots Institute of Hawaii? Via Zoom, Mr. Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii.
Yes, good morning, Chair, members of the committees. This is Jade McMillan on behalf of the Tax Foundation. We've submitted some comments on the measure and will just stand by written comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Fuentes of Hawaii Speech Language Hearing Association via Zoom, followed by Esther Smith on Zoom.
Aloha. Thank you, Chair and committee, for hearing our testimony. We are in support of this bill and do ask for an amendment to include allied skilled professionals such as speech-language pathologists and audiologists. We have several members of our professional association that have private practices and have expressed major issues with the G E.T. tax. I know that I work at a private practice and credentialed by TRICARE. We see children of military, we see military veterans. I think that sometimes speech-language pathologists and audiologists are a little forgotten in the health care field, but we are treating childrens and adults, and we are having issues at the private practice with this tax as we are not able to pass it along to our clients as some other private practices and insurances are. So relief from this tax will greatly impact our ability to be able to hire more professionals to provide services. Private practices on the islands right now are all having major wait lists and are not able to hire more because of operation costs. And to be able to pay the employees with this additional tax would help alleviate that and really help to provide the services to our communities. So we are in support of this bill, and we hope that there can be an amendment to also include the skilled allied professionals in the health care industry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Esther Smith, followed by Annie Thielen on Zoom, and anyone else who may be on Zoom. Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Hello, I am Dr. Esther Smith, board-certified family physician, owner of Dr. Smith Family Medicine in Keala, Kukua. I'm also president of West Hawaii IPA and a board member of Hawaii Academy of Family Physicians. Today, I'm speaking only on behalf of myself and my clinic, standing in support of this measure. Preventive health is not about flashy interventions, it's about everyday practices. Making a healthy health care system is the same in that it's about making enduring changes in policy more than it is about fancy grants and projects. Removing the get from Medicaid, Medicare, and TRICARE is a sample of how to improve the situation that has caused Hawaii to be ranked 51st in the nation for favorability of physician practice. I have patients come in and earnestly thank me for being here because, you know, they aren't expecting to be able to get good care. Good health care shouldn't feel extraordinary, it shouldn't be the exception to the rule, it should be the expectation. Thank you, Chairperson Bolati and Holt, for having this hearing to remove an obstacle to care and supporting small business.
Thank you. Ms. Thielen, and then anyone else on Zoom? No one else? Okay, Ms. Thielen, followed by Audrey Lee in the room.
Hi, good morning. My name is Annie Thielen. I am the owner and business manager of Maui Orthopedic Institute. My husband is Dr. Zachary Thielen, and along with Dr. Eno, who is his partner, we are in support of this bill. And I not only want to do a personal testimony today, but I also want to speak on behalf of all the surgeons and the doctors that are currently in the OR right now, like my husband, and/or treating patients like Dr. Eno currently. You know, I've seen firsthand the sacrifices that my husband has made, and it's just a testimony to all doctors. He spent 14 years of his life, most of our 20s, 30s, training at the best programs, UCSF, you know, Stanford, and now we've decided to move back home because home is, you know, Maui where my parents are. However, we've, you know, opened this clinic about a year and a half ago, but we've been having a hard time keeping it open because the overhead costs, you know, we spend over $80,000 on average every month on overhead costs to keep our office open. And so when we have to pay taxes, GE taxes, for Medicare patients and Medicaid patients and VA patients who are over 50% of our population, because, you know, he specializes in hip and knee replacements, you know, that's a lot. That's over, I want to say, $20,000 that is out of our own pockets that we have to pay so that we can take care of these patients. Now, we've talked a lot about moving to Texas because...
Ms. Thielen, can you wrap it up? We're facing a little bit of a timeline, so if you could wrap it up, we do have your written testimony.
Okay. I guess that's all I want to say is that, you know, we've thought about moving away and a lot of the doctors have. And so with the support of this bill, you know, it would help retain and attract the best doctors here like my husband. Thank you.
Thank you so much for participating. Ms. Lee, and then anyone else in the room? Seeing none, Ms. Lee. Your next, Audrey. And we are on a strict timeline, so if you could keep this to under two minutes, that would be great.
One paragraph. Okay. Good morning, chairs, vice chairs, and committee members. Thank you very much. Of course, I stand in strong support of this bill, SB 1035, S.D. 2. And I would just like, I stand on testimony as well as I'd like to just read this little paragraph here, if you bear with me. I would also like, okay. I feel that a compelling reason to hear this bill is that, you know, it's not just because of the circling of the drain of private health care or the fact that if you lose providers, you lose collecting more G E.T. from providers no longer in practice. It's really about the inequity of this particular tax. You are not exempting provider services in total, only the tax levied against the federal insurances, Medicare, Medicaid, and TRICARE, which is illegal to be collected by providers but is then taxed by the state. This is the reason we are the only state that does collect that particular tax and the reason we should not do so. The last state to stop collecting what they call their general receipts tax went through much of the same discussion as we are now. This is not a bill for the tax to be given back to the providers for the many years of collection. It is a moving forward bill from January 1, 2024, which has a sunset date of two years. In that time, you will be able to see how this bill affects the state budget and health care in Hawaii and see whether to continue that exemption or not. And I hope that it will continue because I myself am a worker in an office, my husband's office, and I see doctors left and right of me, you know, closing their offices, retiring or moving to hospitals or just, you know, not able to sustain the practice financially. We ourselves at several times in the past, oh, five years or so, have seen that question mark, you know, looming in front of us as well, but somehow, you know, we're just managing to get by and want to continue serving our patients. And again, like the other speaker was saying, you know, the patients are so grateful and they keep saying, "Don't retire, don't retire." And some of them are going to the extent of contacting all kinds of people in the state to, you know, keep health care alive. So thank you very much, I appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other testifiers, members, any questions? Seeing none, I think we have a quorum. So Chair's recommendation for the Health Committee is to pass out our version of House Bill 662, latest draft, H D 1. It has a defective date, members. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Would the definition of health care facility include nursing homes?
I don't know the answer to that, but the broad definition of the providers would cover, I think, those folks in those things. And we can, this is going to conference, so it's got a defective date. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair, for the vote.
Health Committee voting on SB 1035, S.D. 2. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Amato.
Aye.
Representative Iligan.
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi.
Aye.
Representative Mizuno.
Aye.
Representative Nishimoto.
Aye.
Representative Garcia.
Aye.
Chair recommendations adopted.
ECD members, same recommendation, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SB 1035 with the same recommendation as the Health Committee. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Member Hesse-Burdig, excuse, member Kong.
Aye.
Member La Chica.
Aye.
Member Nakamura.
Aye.
Member Quinlin.
Aye.
Member Pirek. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're at adjourned. We'll start at 11:20. We're going to move quickly for 11:20 because we have to... Okay, convening our 11:20 a.m. agenda for Health Committee, Health and Homelessness Committee members, we have one measure. We need to move through this quickly. Senate Bill 318 relating to fetal alcohol syndrome disorders. Testifier of State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support.
Daintree Vortolos, Executive Administrator, just really quick, we're in strong support of this. In paragraph three, we're asking for appropriation of $35,000 be added for annual awareness month event, and if that could be added. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Testimony and support from DCAV, support from H SAC, support from Cleo- Cleo Brown, Hawaii Fetal Alcohol Syndrome Disorders Action Group, testimony and support from Jeremy Daniel, Anya Busaki, numerous members and individuals in support. Any testifiers in the room? Department of Health.
Good morning, Chair. I'm sorry, we submitted late testimony. I have hard copies that I'll provide to the vice chair's clerk and to the chairs. The department supports this. We make a recommendation for an appropriation and friendly amendments that adds prevention, primary prevention to the scope. We are, we've had preliminary discussions with a health care provider who possesses the expertise to orchestrate a pilot project, and if appropriated, we think that this individual or the system would be a very strong partner. It is a, I can't name them, but they do a lot of work with women and children. So, thank you. We support this, and I'll make sure that you have copies of our...
Okay, thank you. Any testifiers, any other testifiers in the room? Oh, you can give it to the committee clerk. Any testifiers on Zoom?
Yes, hi. Thank you, yes. Just to say we're in strong support, thank you for hearing this bill.
Second person on Zoom?
I'm right here. My name is Kaya Swan. I'm in standing testimony supportive of this bill. I'll be, if I have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Members, any questions, comments, or questions?
I had a question, sorry.
Darling, one more, and then one brief question because we have to vote.
Good morning, Chair, vice chairs, and members of the committee. I'm here again pleading for you to pass this bill. This is my commitment to this population. I have submitted my testimony, and I'm available for any question. Thank you for having me this morning.
Thank you. Chairman Zun.
No question, no question.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, members. Chair's recommendation on this bill, House Bill, Senate Bill 944, S.D. 1, is to add the appropriation clause as requested by State Council on Developmental Disabilities.
18318.
Oh, I'm sorry, 318. Sorry, this is Senate Bill 318. Thank you, Vice Chair. To make that appropriation blank but noted in the committee report, to reduce this to a three-year pilot program, to add the amendments by Department of Health, and to have a defective date of our standard 3,000 date. Members, any comments, questions, or concerns?
I just want to share, thank you, Chair, for passing this bill, and I wanted to thank the advocates as well as Department of Health. Lauren Kim, thank you. It's been a while. I'm so glad that Department of Health is on board and asked for those amendments. Thank you so much. Please let the governor know, we appreciate that. Thank you, Daintree, thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
No other questions or comments? Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SB 318, S.D. 2. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Amato.
Aye.
Representative Iligan.
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi.
Aye.
Representative Mizuno.
Aye.
Representative Nishimoto.
Aye.
Representative Garcia.
Aye.
Chair recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Members, this is adjourned, and we're opening up our 9 a.m. agenda for decision-making. Senate Bill 1492. Chair's recommendation for this measure is to add an appropriation for DOH to engage in education and training about policies related to emergency hospitalization and assisted community treatment, and to clarify DOH's role regarding reports of individuals in crisis to specify that they are to coordinate, if indicated, completion of the ACT examination, preparation of the ACT certificate, and filing the ACT petition with assistance from the Attorney General. Also to clarify that DOH may engage a contracted provider, another department, or a private provider to fulfill the process for ACT and to authorize DOH if DOH is unable to coordinate the ACT process to notify another mental health program for coordination of care in the community for the individual. In addition, members, we're going to add appropriation section for procuring software and maintaining data with a blank appropriation, appropriation of, but we'll note the appropriation in the committee report for $4 million. These are the amendments for, from DOH, and we will also include the requested positions into the draft. Finally, we will adopt the amendments from the Attorney General's office, and I believe that's it, and we have our defective, our standard defective date of 3,000. Members, comments, questions, or concerns?
Christian?
Yes.
What about my suggestion about, within available resources for that part that says that DOH shall respond to reports?
So we will take that into consideration and note that that is a concern, but I think there's enough safeguards in this current bill to ensure that this will be able to be completed. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SB 1492, S.D. 2. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments noting all members present for this bill and the rest of the bills that we'll be voting on today. Any reservations or no's? Seeing none, Chair, recommendations adopted.
Members, moving on to our next bill, Senate Bill 1594 relating to crisis intervention. Chair's recommendation for this is to look at and adopt, in part, the amendments from the State Department of Health. I will modify those a bit by saying that in Section 2, pages, page 2, line 7 to 13, the department shall coordinate, collaborate with law enforcement, courts, mental health providers, and the community. In addition, we're going to blank out the appropriation amount, $11.4 million, and insert that into the committee report. And then we are going to retain the language in that Section 5 stating, provided that no funds shall be released unless matched on a dollar-for-dollar basis by funds for a private source. I don't want to foreclose that if there is in fact a private donor who's ready to step up in a supplement state funding. Finally, I will also say that it's going to be for the expansion of crisis intervention and diversion program activities because this is going to reflect that this should not undercut what is already being funded. Finally, in the other appropriation amounts for the use of law enforcement, the $150,000, we will blank that out and put that into the committee report, as well as adopt our standard house defective date of 3,000 and any tech amendments identified by HMSO for clarity and consistency in style. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SB... Voting on S.B. 1594, S.D. 2. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Seeing none. Chair recommendations adopted.
Members, for Senate Bill 1472 relating to behavioral health services, Chair's recommendation is to adopt the proposed amendments from Department of Health but blanking out all of the appropriation dates and instead putting those into the committee reports as well as adopting the amendment by H.M.A., modifying the expansion enhancing of crisis mobile outreach services to reflect federal funding language, as well as any tech amendments identified by H.M.S.O. and our standard defective date of 3,000. Members, any comments or questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on S.B. 1472, S.D. 2. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Seeing none. Chair recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. I just want to put a pause here. Those three bills we pass are critical to addressing some of our homelessness issues, so I thank you for your indulgence. These all will go to conference, so these are very critical bills that we will be moving forward. Next up, members, Senate Bill 1016. A lot of discussion on this in the committee report. Members, I'd like for our committee report to note that the private agreement in question, again, this is Senate Bill 1016, is going to be up for its first 10-year renewal on or about the year 2047 and a second 10-year renewal for 2057. This implicates a major hospital system affecting three of our islands on Maui County, and so this is a very important measure. Chair's recommendation is to move this forward with a defective date and any, any tech amendments identified by H.M.S.O. for further discussion. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on S.B. 1016, S.D. 1. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Seeing none. Chair recommendations adopted.
Members, S.B. 1381 relating to the repeal of section 328-106, H.R.S. Chair's recommendation is to push this out with a defective house date of 3,000, I believe, July 1, 3,000. Any tech amendments identified by H.M.S.O. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on S.B. 1381, S.D. 1. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments. Any reservations or no's? Chair, seeing none. Chair recommendations adopted.
Members, moving on to Senate Bill 944. This is a measure that we took up earlier for hearing. Chair's recommendation is to push, pass out an H.D. 1, striking Department of Health as the lead and putting in place the Department of the Attorney General shall convene a task force, striking the language outdated at, that's line four, placing the representative from the Department of the Attorney General as the chairperson, striking out the fact that the Department of Health or the Attorney General has to invite the following individuals, but instead including the task force, a family court judge, a family law attorney, representatives from, a health care professional familiar with hospital and birthing center procedures, a mental health professional familiar with post-adoption issues, and an individual with personal knowledge of adoption-related health and medical issues. In addition, we will also include a member from the Women's Commission, the Commission on the Status of Women, as well as the Fatherhood Commission, and then any other member as recommended by the task force. Chair's recommendation is to require 20 days prior to regular session of 2024, a report from this task force that lays out a plan for how they are going to be addressing the very complex issues in this area, as well as retain a report for 40 days prior to the convening of the regular session of 2025. We will make this act effective on July 1, 3,000. Members, any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on S.B. 944, S.D. 1. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments. Any reservations or no's?
No vote.
No vote for Rep. Garcia. All others vote aye. Chair recommendations adopted.
All right, members, that concludes our hearings. Thank you for your hard work, and we will see you down on the floor. We are adjourned.
Good job, Chair.